Okay, next we have the meeting of the Urbana City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yeah, here. Yes, and I'm here.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes, and I'm here too.
Ms. Chenoweth is not here. Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe? Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. First item, approval of minutes of the previous meetings. We have November 5th and November 26th.
So moved.
Second.
Except I have-
Okay. You can still make a correction. There's a motion to approve by Ms. Stevenson, seconded by Mr. Lewis. You have a correction or addition?
Well, I'm just curious. It says that we called the order at 7:47 PM.
That's because there were several meetings maybe? Which one are you talking about, the 26th?
On the 5th. What did we have before?
A hearing. We had a long hearing about historic preservation.
Oh, that's right, okay. That's right, okay, okay. I didn't know, I thought that was public input, okay.
There's always a method behind this madness.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, those in favor of approving the minutes of these two meetings, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, petitions and communications. Is there anyone who would like to address the Urbana City Council?
Yeah.
Okay, we have two people. First, we have Tyler Fitch.
We're gonna come up and get it.
Oh, okay. Tyler Fitch and Ellen Kursenoff.
We're here to show off just a little bit.
Make it brief.
Yeah, we will.
Tyler Fitch, 503 East California Avenue.
And Ellen Kursenoff, I'm with the Park District and we're at 303 West University.
Okay.
And we were privileged to be in Springfield on November 27th to receive Governor's Hometown Award for a project that took place here in Urbana, the Victory Park Redevelopment Project, which has been just a terrific group project. We worked real closely with the city. It was a wonderful development, redevelopment of the park. Worked very closely with the Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association, and Tyler's a member of that group. And it just was such a wonderful project. It was so inclusive that we applied for a Governor's Hometown Award this past year. And we took, we took first place in the Parks and Recreation Division-
Oh, wow.
-within our population category for the city of Urbana. So, yeah, go ahead.
That's an awesome sign.
It is, yeah.
Can you get the camera to focus on it?
I'm hopeful that Mr. Gray can find a place for that.
The park's, the park's not as big as the sign.
Yeah. At the banquet-
We got a plaque, too.
-we received the plaque, we received that sign as, by virtue of winning the award, and we received another sign by virtue of winning a door prize. So, they pulled their name out of the hat, two signs, and so we're very happy, very honored to receive this award. There's already positive effects in the neighborhood. We've seen some positive effects, I think, on real estate in the area, and so we're very excited.
Well, thank you very much for your hard work, and congratulations. Did you want to say something, Dennis?
I would like, yeah. Of course, I'm very proud of the, this event, which is in Ward 5. The Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association really had a large part to play.
There we go, I feel like Kilroy.
Yeah, I know. It's all right. It's totally cool, see? I'm just gonna read the, there was a program announcing all the prize winners in the Governor's Hometown Award banquet, which we attended. The smallest town, and they're so, they're so democratic. The smallest category for the town, population zero to 2,500. Those ladies who had put in a little tiny park next to their railroad tracks won an award, just as nice as ours. But we were in the category from 2,000, 26,000, no, yeah, 26,100 to 40,000. And this was the write-up in the brochure. Parks and Recreation, City of Urbana, Victory Park Redevelopment. Victory Park is one of Urbana's older neighborhood parks. It was named for the Victory Gardens in World War I and World War II. Prior to the redevelopment project, the park had not undergone any major upgrades to equipment or amenities since 1980. In 2005, the Park District was approached with a request for updates to the park by the neighbors. Monthly meetings began and the Victory Park master plan was developed, which completely redesigned the park. The Park District staff received an Auslid grant to fund the majority of the project, with the remaining amount coming from a park development block grant. Residents of the neighborhood and the community were directly involved, giving extra, the project an extra boost of energy. Volunteers worked countless hours to plan and execute the redevelopment, including building a playground in one day. The park, which was, which will be finished in 2008, has already begun to inspire homeowners and businesses in the historic area and to make improvements. There was a genuine renewed sense of pride in the neighborhood. So at the upcoming time, we'll be having the construction of our enlarged picnic ramada, our shelter, and the establishment of planting gardens that are accessible to handicapped individuals. So, I thank the Park Department so much.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
Now, we did have a second award to Urbana, and Bill Gray is gonna explain that one.
No, it's okay. I kinda had a question, but I can ask you another time.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Hey, we get to have a-
There is a question from Heather.
When I drive by, I mean, I go by Victory Park, on the north side of Victory Park, almost daily, eh, daily. And I see people working out there. What are they doing right now?
Well, on the north end of the park, they're working, part of the project was to bury the power line that was going overhead, so you're probably seeing some of the trenching and working on laying that. And the playground that was up there was moved to the south end of the park. Now, we're gonna do a plaza seating area on the north end. So, there's been some concrete laid, and we're gonna start putting in some picnic benches. We want it to be a nice little seating area that people can enjoy on that side of the park. Rather than moving everything south, we still wanted to keep something up on the north end.
Well, it does look great. I, as a young girl, my dad would take me, might actually take my brothers to play basketball with their friends there, but I would tag along because I was a tomboy. And so I've seen Victory Park go from a place where it was just Victory Park into a really phenomenal place for the neighborhood kids to play, and I applaud you guys for all you've done.
Well, we were really happy to do that. We're excited about it. We think it's really just a wonderful project, so.
Yeah, well, congratulations.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. Bill Gray?
Not to be outdone, but Urbana did receive a second award. Actually, our partners with Champaign, U of I, and Urbana, and this was in a little bit different category, same sign, so we're gonna have three such signs in Urbana shining here very soon. But this is for our cleanup beautification effort. This is the Boneyard Creek Cleanup Community Day. You're packing last week, you've had some photos of those, what the folks were doing during that day. But we were in a different category. This was over the over 75,000 population because of our partnership with Champaign and the university. But in summer fashion, last Tuesday, we were so recognized, and I could be corrected, but I think we're probably the only community that received two awards in the whole state this year. So it was quite an effort, and I think it just exemplifies in two ways, in so many ways, how people in this community volunteer their time for various organizations and activities, and it just happens to be that these two were applied for and were so noted and recognized by the state and, you know, and the governor. So, pretty neat stuff.
And they both are, have the same thing in common, they're examples of intergovernmental cooperation. So thank you very much, and all the people that worked on both of these projects.
There was actually one more thing that happened for the Champaign County area. The, under the general category of population of 75,000 and over, an award is also given to the Champaign County Illinois Radio Readers. And that is a project where they serve, they read the newspapers to people who have impaired hearing and sight, rather, and dyslexia. And their project was also awarded a prize similarly.
And Illinois Radio Readers, we support through our social service funding, too.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
We appreciate them very much.
Okay, so we got three, we participated in three awards, so thank you, everyone. Anyone else like to address the Urbana City Council? Okay?
Mayor?
Oh, Charlie Smythe?
I have a request. Following last week's presentation on lighting by Gary Zico and the discussion we had, a number of interesting points were raised. I got a lot of email about it, a lot of ideas from people got sent my way. And there's some long-term issues and implications of some of the choices that we could be making. So I'd like to request that this be on the agenda next week. Hopefully Danielle will be back and we can talk about it. I consider it part of our sustainability efforts. So if we could just put it on the end of next week's agenda, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, for the committee of the whole?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. We can do that. Brandon?
I had another sort of brief announcement along those lines, and a request for an agenda item next week. As many of you probably know, this Thursday is the Bike Plan Workshop, where we're gonna get together and look at the maps of the sort of unveiled bike plan for the whole city of Urbana, and hear people's comments. It is this Thursday night, December 6th, from 7 o'clock to 9 o'clock at the middle school cafetorium. And we asked the people RSVP, there's more information posted on the website, but it's not necessary that you RSVP, but we do hope people will come, the whole two hours, from 7 to 9, because we'll group again by neighborhoods, and people will be able to see, along with your neighbors, what the exact changes in your area of the city would be, and whether we've proposed something that works or not for your neighborhood. So, that's Thursday night, and the Bicycleists and Pedestrian Advisory Commission finished their annual report at their November meeting, so I was hoping that we could add our report to the committee agenda for next Monday. That's the meeting on the 10th, and I could give a very short presentation of the annual report, and Jennifer Selby, who's our staff person and engineer, could give a very short report about the bike plan progress.
Okay, who's chairing that meeting?
I will be.
Oh, Dennis, okay.
I will be.
Yeah, I'm sure that we can get both of those things on.
Just email me, please. We'll make sure that happens.
Okay, anyone else? All right, let's move on. Old Business, ordinance number 2007-09-120. This is an ordinance approving a text amendment to the zoning ordinance of the city of Urbana, repealing the special use requirements for outdoor advertising signs. Okay, here we have Robert Myers.
Thank you. This was reviewed at the last committee of the whole meeting and forwarded to the city council. I'd like to note, one proofreading error that should be corrected on page 39, and I've handed out, so you can see on paper in front of you, just a one-word change, it's just a proofreading correction. On paragraph 5, changed the word nonconforming to conforming. It has to do with nonconforming billboards that are destroyed and reestablished. But with that one change, which has been reviewed with our own legal staff, and also that of Adams Outdoor Advertising, the city staff recommends approval for this ordinance.
Okay, Ron O'Neil?
And just, so you also know that I just received from Mr. Kerchak, our outside counsel today, a draft copy of the Order of Dismissal for the lawsuit pending approval of these changes.
Okay. Is there a motion? Mr. Smythe?
I'll move ordinance number 2007-09-120, an ordinance approving a text amendment to the zoning ordinance of the city of Urbana, Illinois.
I second.
Okay, I believe that was Lynn Barnes. Motion by Mr. Smythe, seconded by Ms. Barnes. Any other discussion? If not, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance passes. Next, ordinance number 2007-11-125, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement with TC Met Urbana LLC. And here we have Tom Carino.
Evening. You've seen this item before you previously. As was discussed at council last week, the only change in this version of the agreement is on page 11 of the redevelopment agreement, section 4.7, leasing of retail space. This section provides that rather than have the developer come back for city council approval to lease to a non-retail user, the developer is going to make a good faith effort for one full year after the issuance of a certificate of occupancy to lease to a retail user, after which they can lease to any user without city council approval.
Okay. In looking at these plans, I'm very impressed with how they've dealt with the parking, that there's two, two layers of parking underneath the building. Ms. Barnes?
I'd like to move approval of ordinance number 2011-125.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Barnes, seconded by Ms. Stevenson. Mr. Roberts?
Okay. Basically, I do support this, and I realize that we have offered the developer an opportunity to try to fill the retail space, and they have, they're obliged to work on that for about a year. In the, in the, in the language of that article that was added, the section that was added, it says, it also says that "In the event that such retail space or any such part thereof has not been leased to one or more retail tenants during such period, or it thereafter becomes vacant, while the developer shall continue to seek retail tenants, the developer may lease such retail, vacant retail space to any part thereof, to any possible tenants, whether or not such tenants' use is subject to payment of sales tax." So, in other words, potentially, and that's on page 12. So potentially then, it sounds like that if a retail tenant moved out after about two years, they would not be obliged to try to fill it again with retail. It would always then become whatever the market would allow?
That's, that's my reading of the agreement. That if they were to lease to a retail tenant who were then to vacate, they'd have no responsibility to fill that with another retail tenant. They'd have the flexibility to fill that space with anyone. Now, I will add that the developer has mentioned several times that for quality of life issues, they're really targeting retail tenants, in that they feel it offers an amenity to residents of the building to live there. And, and the success of this project will not be driven by the non-residential space. The success of the project's going to be driven by the residential leasing.
Yes, I realize.
So they feel that they have a better opportunity to lease the residential space with retail tenants.
I'm just bringing this up because it was a concern that was raised by Danielle Chenoweth, specifically that we have a real need to try to fill retail space that's been designated as such by developer with indeed retail space. And we haven't had the best experience with that so far, but, all right, I just want to say that we're watching.
Okay, any other comments? If not, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Next, reports of standing committees. Brandon Bowersox?
Yeah, last Monday, the committee of the whole met and forwarded a number of items here to council, all with the recommendation to approve them. The first is ordinance 2007-11-124, the ordinance revising the annual budget for the purchase of some city vehicles. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bowersox, seconded by Ms. Barnes. Any questions or comments? If not, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson, I'm sorry.
That's okay. After all these misters, I'll take your apology. Yeah, I am a tomboy, that's for sure. Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes. Okay, that ordinance passes. Mr. Bowersox?
Next, we had three items related to the tax levy, and we'll take them individually. One of these are resolution. The first is ordinance 2007-11-126. This is the annual tax levy ordinance of the city of Urbana for the year beginning July 1, 2007, and ending June 30, 2008. For the committee, I move approval.
I second that.
Motion by Mr. Bowersox, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
I'll be voting no on these items, and if I could just explain why. I understand that the city of Urbana is not responsible for a large amount of our tax bills, but the city of Urbana is responsible for the assessment of homes, and every time that my constituents are getting their tax bill, they're paying more every year. And that means that the assessed value of their home is going up, but they're not selling their home. They're still living there, and a lot of my constituents do live on a, not a paycheck to paychecks, but they have a fixed income, and so they're working around, you know, they have a new tax bill and it's higher, and so they have to sometimes take money out of savings or whatever the case may be. And so that's why I'm voting no, is because, you know, people aren't selling their houses, and yet they're, in my, in my ward, people aren't necessarily selling their homes, and yet the value of their homes is going up, and so their tax bill is higher.
Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
No.
Okay, that motion carries. Mr. Bowersox?
The second is ordinance 2007-11-127. This is the ordinance abating the tax levy for the $965,000 of general obligation bonds, series 05. For the committee of the whole, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bowersox, seconded by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
No.
That motion carries. Mr. Bowersox?
Last, we have a resolution, 2007-11-027R. This is the resolution directing the county clerk to abate the tax levy for the general corporate purpose for the year beginning July 1, 2007, and ending July 30, 2008. For the committee, I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bowersox, seconded by Mr. Smythe. Any discussion? Mr. Smythe?
Yeah, I'm sympathetic to some extent with the way our property tax rate, well, what we should point out is that this last item is to maintain the property tax rate at the same rate as the previous year, which is a little lower than the previous year to that, and that we have had a decline in the, in the property tax rate over the past 10 years. It's not as much as some people would like, but we do need to understand. And the portion, the average increase of people's homes, I believe 3 point, is it 3.9%? Yeah, 3.9, something like that, which is higher than the rate of inflation. Ideally, we would have the average just go up with inflation. That would be, that would be really nice if we could. But at the same time, our own expenses are going up faster than inflation because of state mandated pension and healthcare costs. And so we're caught between a rock and a hard place. We would be, it would be great if we had more sales tax coming in and more, you know, more development, more new development and so on, and we've got more this year than I recall from previous years. But it is a difficult issue, and I'm very sympathetic with Heather, because in my neighborhood, the average increase is more like 10%. It's a lot more than inflation. It's much bigger, and it depends on what part of the community is. So if my neighborhood is going up at 10%, and the average is 3.9, that means that there are a lot of people that are, that are at zero, or less than, you know, they're less than the average one would expect. I don't know what the median and what the actual distribution is, which might be interesting, but, but my neighborhood has gone up 10%, I believe, four years in a row now. And that can be a little tough, but, you know, you do have to pay for your schools and for your police and fire and so on, so, and it is an investment. Your house is an investment of sorts. You may or may not live to see that investment pay off to you, but, but that is the way our system works, and unless the state reforms the way schools are funded, which is 53% of the property tax bill, we're actually caught in this, in this race of increasing property taxes.
Okay, if there are no further comments, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.
Yes, the last item from the committee of the whole is ordinance 2007-11-133. This is the Erosion Sedment Control Ordinance. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bowersox, seconded by Mr. Smythe. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Mr. Smythe?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Public Works again and the crew that worked on this for over two years, developing this with our sister governments in the area. Another great example of, of the city working with, with other governments in the area to get something done. So, thanks again.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. I don't believe there's any reports of special committees? Reports of officers? Dan, Tom Carino, our Economic Development Director.
Dan Carino.
Evening. You have before you the, you have before you the Economic Development Report for November. There are a number of items on here, just to go over some briefly. Public Works Department is actually spearheading a number of initiatives with consultants, which we, community development and economic development, have participated in, including the Boneyard Beautification Project, the Philo Road Beautification Project, and also a downtown parking study that's gonna be coming up. So again, Public Works taking the lead with participation by community development and economic development, also working on a number of business relocations, including Construction Materials Company, a grocer-type use, potentially relocating to our downtown, and then also we, Cookies by Design is actually just opened up at Five Points, the northeast corner of Cunningham and University, so that's a great addition to that shopping center. Staff continues to work with Menards on their 300-plus acre project out on High Cross Road, which is a very exciting project, getting closer to seeing some construction start out there, likely in the spring of 2008. And then very high levels of construction activity in south and southeast Urbana, near Philo Road and Windsor Road and all along Philo Road. So that's a great sight to see, all the construction going on there. And then also, excuse me, also, the city recently issued a request for proposal for marketing services. That proposal is out, and we are waiting to get some responses, and we are requesting responses for that proposal to be in by December 17th, I believe. So hoping to see some responses for professional help in our marketing services. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Ms. Barnes?
Do you expect anything to be happening soon on the west side of where the University of Illinois Credit Union's going?
We are currently renegotiating a development agreement with the owner of Gateway Shops. That entire project, which I believe is to what you're referring, that entire project has a, an existing development agreement that was approved by- project has a, an existing development agreement, that was approved by city council last year, we are currently renegotiating with the property owner, that development agreement, there were some items that weren't anticipated with the original development agreement, including how exactly the out parcels would be sold off and developed as part of the agreement, so there were just some unanticipated consequences of the agreement that we're working through right now in a renegotiation, so although, other than the credit union, we don't have anything submitted at this point, the developer who's negotiating with us on the development agreement does anticipate moving forward on the inline shop portion, and potentially another component of the development in the future.
Brandon, did you have a question?
Yeah, Tom, thanks for the update, I had one question about the downtown Urbana parking study project, and I don't know actually whether this is a CD or Public Works-driven thing, but I'll ask you the question, just in case, the downtown stakeholders meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, it sounds like, there was one business person I was talking to just today about the parking study, who said he wasn't aware of it, one of the downtown store owners, so is this the only opportunity for input, were all the downtown business owners invited, or is there still time?
Bill Gray might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but the, my understanding is that the, the meetings scheduled for tomorrow are identified stakeholders, and they're one-on-one stakeholder meetings with specifically identified stakeholders, I believe there will be an opportunity for public input in the future, but tomorrow is just one-on-one interviews, of which economic development was considered a stakeholder, so we do have a stakeholder meeting with the consultant tomorrow, but yes, tomorrow's meetings are just one-on-one with identified stakeholders.
Okay, great, thanks, I would just encourage you at some point, yeah, to have that kind of workshop or forum where all the downtown business owners could get a nice invitation from us, and a chance to see different options, and tell us what they like and what they don't about some of the ideas for reconfiguring parking downtown, so, thank you.
I have a very brief report, I'm a member of the US Conference of Mayors, and I've just been appointed to the mayor's water council, I've been to some of their meetings, I got appointed now, and on the water subject, which is a huge subject for this century, there are some communities in Illinois, Bowling Brook, and Homer Glen, and two other communities are jointly going forward on eminent domain to purchase a water company, which are part of Illinois American Water, in their area, and also in Fort Wayne, Indiana, their public utilities board has voted to go for eminent domain to purchase the private facilities that they have in that city, so, a lot of things, I think that we should at least be studying that, since we do have huge rate increases proposed, and I think we're spending a lot of money on legal for that, and all I can see in the future is a continuing drain in terms of legal expenses every time we're asked to have an increase in the rates. Okay, Brandon?
Yeah, I just sort of had a question about that, are Peoria and Pekin at all in the discussion again, because they've, they've gone down the road before, and...
I think we'd have to sort of take the lead on that, but they are also concerned about the rate increases.
Yeah, definitely, okay, well, yeah, anything you learn, it would be great to sort of know what other cities find, how the valuation issues go with Fort Wayne, these others, and how legally the process goes for them, thank you.
Dennis, did you want to say something?
Different topic?
Yes.
Okay, different topic. Currently, the assessment report has come in from the task force, or the consultant that is helping evaluate the public access aspect of the peg channels for public television, this is your public access, your education, and your government channels, and the Champagne County members have all received, I think it's like about a forty-two-page report, our report hasn't been passed out to us, this, this report's been available for about three weeks now, but I understand that Bill Dejernay has placed it on the city website, and that's how he's making it available to the members of city council, we're going to be actually entering negotiations with Insight Cable Provider next year, and I really encourage every member here to visit the website, look at the assessment report for the peg channels, we would, my personal interest is that we would support a very aggressive approach to maintaining our, our public access television station, our accessibility for the education channel, and the, the government channel, the assessment indicated that there was significant interest in establishing an independent media station someplace that both communities could share, where the public could come and create new public input for the public television channel, that is one of the most important aspects of having the public access open to the public, and so I would encourage everybody to evaluate that, look at that, read that report, because we'll be asked to support it in the near future.
Under new business, we have resolution number 2007-12-029R, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a certificate of consistency for the Housing Authority of Champagne County five-year plan fiscal 2005 through 2009, and the annual plan for fiscal 2008.
Sorry, grants and community development, the Housing Authority makes this request annually to ensure that their plan is consistent with our consolidated plan, plans have been reviewed by myself, John Schneider, and Libby Tyler, and we noted the only major difference is language about Lakeside Terrace, they've included language that you've requested as a council, and we recommend approving the resolution, forwarding it to the mayor for execution. Oh, Mr. Ed Bland is here from the Housing Authority of Champagne County, if you have any questions.
Mr. Smythe?
I have a number of questions that may actually be better served in committee with more people here, in particular, I'm hoping Danielle will be back next week, I've got one, two, three, four, seven, eight, nine, about thirteen or fourteen questions here that I've put together after reading this real carefully, some of it's sort of old, but part of it is from sort of taking a new look at it, and trying to figure out where we are after three years, I could ask some of those questions tonight, some of them next week, or my preference would be just to send this to committee next week, so I could try to refine some of these and circulate these among others, among staff and council members.
Okay, are you making a motion?
I'm gonna wait till, see what Brandon had to say here.
Well, yeah, I had some questions too, but if we are gonna discuss it next week, and sort of get into the issue, and talk about Lakeside more, those would all be helpful, and we could just wait till next week.
Okay, I would move to send this to committee next week.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smythe, seconded by Ms. Barnes, to send this to committee next week, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we'll put it on the agenda for next week. There being no further business this meeting...